Okay, I think we've done it.
Take two.
Take two.
All right.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry Gary, you're done.
Thanks for your break.
Went over by twelve minutes, sorry.
Your morning commissioners. My name is Gary Olds, I live at thirty-three oh eight Frontier Circle here in Manhattan. I'm just here to talk briefly as I seem to do maybe this time of year or maybe later in the year with regards to budgets and things like that. I just wanna let you know that once again, this is a wonderful product that the County Clerk's Office puts out. Very informative, I distributed about twenty of these at a meeting on Saturday and I think it was very helpful to the people who were there to understand. From a snapshot standpoint, without doing a deep dive into all the details, understanding where the expenditures go. As I pointed out last year, the challenge in this is you don't really see the revenues unless you get this sheet. So I don't know that it's possible since this is legal size, letter-sized paper. And I know that because I was a typing teacher. And then legal-sized paper, eight and a half by eleven, eleven by seventeen, whatever. Excuse me. And I would encourage you as you revise this in your office, takes a look at this, just here, if there's any more information that would be valuable to the consumer or to the citizen, please consider putting it on there. I talked with Gary County last year, I think. And one of the things that, or two of the things that they added that I thought was helpful, it's more of a tidbit. Is they, they mentioned some, a little bit of demographics with regards to Gary County, for example, the population as of whatever official census they wanna use. And they talk about the square miles, how big of, how big an area do you serve? I think it would also be helpful to not just have the percentages of revenue, but the actual dollars, particularly when it comes to add the law. The expenses are on here in quite well detailed and I appreciate the fact that you have Riley County Police Department on here so that people understand the difference. With regards to transparency, I would also ask you to consider or the right people to consider, on the very front page of the website for the county to put a budget button, so somebody who's interested in just the budget side can tap on that and maybe they can gets whatever appropriate information would be under that tab, including this summary sheet so that they can get to it real easy, because I think that's for the citizens if they really wanna know about the numbers, make it, make it the fewest number of clicks you could possibly do to get, get to the budget and the numbers. And then with regards to the twenty-twenty-six budget that I know that department heads are working on and you do the mixture of all that you do to, to get to the point where you get to the hearings, hopefully this year, or next year will go smoothly or relatively smoothly as this year did for you all. My recollection is you did an excellent job of getting to the R and R, hopefully that's, that's an objective, I don't know that you can do it two years in a row, but with my limited understanding of budget, which is extremely unlimited, the biggest challenge that you have is payroll. You gotta figure out a way to, to control that payroll, particularly for the people who are at the upper end compensation and it's just it's not gonna be sustainable over time, but not necessarily yours in my lifetime, thank you.
Gary.
Thank you.
Good morning commissioners, I'm Shannon Sterling, I'm the Chair for the Riley County Reach Committee. This morning I am here to present the Employee of the Month Award. Wait for some people to join here that are anxiously waiting. So this nomination, this nomination was anonymous, but I'm gonna go ahead and just read it. They nominate Diane Creek for Employee of the Month. As the new Director of the Riley County Health Department, Diane has stepped into the role with confidence and determination, leading the department through their recent challenges with grace and resilience. Public health is a demanding field, especially in today's world, yet Diane has shown own unwavering dedication to upholding the strong reputation of public health in Riley County. She has quickly become an invaluable asset to our team, bringing leadership, vision and commitment to excellence. Diane's leadership is inspiring, she listens, supports and guides our staff while ensuring that the Health Department continues to serve our community at the highest level. Her ability to navigate the challenges with a positive attitude and clear direction has made a significant impact in a short time. Diane's hard work and dedication deserve to be recognized. She is a wonderful leader and a strong advocate for public health and a true asset to Riley County. Thank you Diane for your commitment to the department and the community we serve, like you to come up and accept this award.
You're welcome.
I can take one out.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Any other type of comments? Let's go to commissioners.
Hopefully not today. Fortunately, I don't have a ton, so I guess we're okay there. Oh, I gotta get it pulled up here, give me a second. Well, of course, I'll take a moment. Hopefully everybody had a wonderful Easter holiday weekend, spent some time with family and friends. It was kind of a quiet day for me, but I've heard from many people, I keep forgetting how many friends I've got across the country. Over now and again, they surprised me, yesterday was one of those days, so a cool catch up with everybody. Thursday afternoon, I was at the doctor again, just doing some tests and trying to see where we're at, got all the results back and there's no red flags or anything, so we don't know, so just keep going out, that's why I missed the City County County. By the time I got done, I was gonna get all the way over on the other side of town, I figured it'd be done, so. Let's see, Friday morning, I attended the Hardgrave Southman Defense View up in the north part of the county. Certainly interesting as they all tend to be, hopeful that we get some kind of a, I'm gonna say commendable solution. Yeah, okay, sounds like we may have a long ways to go on that one though, but of course, enjoyed stopping by Sharps over in Randolph. Came out with about ninety dollars worth of stuff, including a brisket, so. Yeah, everything in there, I didn't realize that, but came home with a cast iron skillet and egg. Helly beans.
Right there.
Yeah. Just a little bit of everything. Well, I could've, I could've, it sounds like somebody needed that, could've been okay there, yeah. No, it turned out good, so Saturday morning, that's what I spent my day doing, was making that brisket. First time I've done that and it turned out amazing, amazing, so I guess I think I've found a new hobby, so. Other than that, it was pretty quiet, tough weekend for K-State baseball on the ones, geez. Good weekend for K-State Wings Basketball, so picked up a, picked up a pretty good player from an NBA All-Star, so. Basketball season might be fun after, just took some time to catch up on all my correspondence and getting prepared for this week's County Commissioners Conference. Started, so, all right, that's all I got.
Okay. Well, Thursday afternoon, after our meeting, I attended a focus group discussion at Senior Center. It was geared toward healthcare and other issues facing seniors in the community. And it was sponsored by the North Central Flint Hills Area Unaging. It was interesting and informative and they had those, had these groups all day long. Later that afternoon, I attended City-County Meeting hosted by County Commission in our chambers. Update was given by Danny Hallgren of the Conseprary Community Health Center. Then that evening, I attended Monday Thursday Services at my church. Friday, Commissioners, County Attorneys and County Clerk had a fence view in the northern part of the county. Mission report referring to dispute between two landowners on whether, where and who pays for offense between the party. Deputy County Counselor did a really good job of keeping the discussion in focus.
Yeah.
Let's say, then Friday evening, I attended Good Friday Services at the church. Saturday, I spent most of the day just relaxing, catching up on paperwork, things around the house. Was able to get some roses and other plants fertilized before the rain was coming, so I got out there and did some of that. One thing is all the, all the seeds that I, I threw out for the birds this winter are coming up. Hold on. Let's see, Sunday, I played in the bell choir at my church for both Easter services. So we started early and got out late. Afterward, I went to lunch at some friend's house for Easter dinner. And later I went over documents for today's meeting and the agenda items for the Law Board meeting this afternoon. That's all I got.
That's our first, our first budget meeting. Real, real.
Oh yeah. Excited. They got like five thousand different.
Yeah, gosh. Thursday afternoon was the quarterly meeting for Atta Bus. Staff was there, the auditor was there for his report. I was the only board member that showed up.
Really?
And we're gonna reschedule the meeting.
It just slipped, miscommunication or what?
Well, part of it was there's a Pot County representative in a city, Manhattan City, that were supposed to be here, but I don't know where all the rest of it. So. Yeah, Pot County wasn't here either, so I don't know, because he, they hadn't got representatives showing up, but. Anyway, since that meeting ended early, I was able to come down to the City-County Meeting, City-County, County Meeting. As you mentioned, you got an update from Danny on Consa. They also discussed, City also discussed, they wanna change the format of the meetings a little bit to give more information between the city and counties. Not exactly sure how it's gonna work, but they wanna try something. Then after that, race up to the other side of town, missed, or like, missed the first start of my grandson's soccer game, which is coached by one of the Atta Bus staff.
Oh, really?
Guess that's during the meeting when we were just getting started, he said, I'm gonna have this done in time for you to get the soccer, I said, okay. Friday was another fence view, it seems required to have bad weather for those. It was cold, it was cold and windy on that. Heard from both saying, no, landowners and view the area in question. Making final decisions on that at a future meeting. And that's all I've.
Anything for this, Commissioners? First item we have, this is Riley County Employee Action Form, Ashton Martin, Election Day Worker, Election Department, Separation of Service, Keenan Adolf, for promotion, Parks and Purchasing Agent, Public Works. All three please sign. You, any changes to the minutes, Commissioners?
Who had then make a motion to approve the minutes as written from the April seventeenth meeting of the other county commission.
I would second that.
They moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the April seventeenth meeting on favor.
Tentative genus look, Commissioners? Any items for next week's press conference? Not yet, Brittany Phillips on purchase cards at nine o'clock.
Do you guys, there's one to have a meeting about RHID with the City, County, School District? I don't think whole group together would be a.
No.
We want to designate one person.
I was gonna bring it up at the end of the meeting, now it's fine, no, that's fine.
I was too.
Sorry, I missed the first.
But RHID with the, with the city and, and school board reps, they all wanted to.
Oh, okay, yeah, kind of task force or?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
And I don't know.
I'm willing to do it, I told Kristen, it would be, would be bad to have all three of us, I've asked Jacob and Amanda to be the other representatives, since Jacob with the our policy together, so if there were questions, that would be.
Person to go to. Come up with three per entity, I thought it was one per, per.
Just number one, and then you have two for each, otherwise it's a, they have more than two, it's an official meeting.
Right.
I say, so then you can have everybody together and by time, that's gonna be twenty people by the time you get everybody busts that.
I think they were talking somewhere between like eight and twelve total.
Oh, okay, because when I talked to him, it was like three.
That's fine if you wanna do it.
Can do that. I've got a, I'm helping with the information.
Funny backup for.
I'm a little kitten, I wonder if any of the neighbors up there have, have ever said anything about the project, if they've ever been brought into. There's a lot of people.
The city usually has a public notice when those.
I think that's the purpose of the next step, they're hearing, they're public hearing, that's when people have the opportunity.
I'm not for sure what their process is exactly, but there's always a public hearing that they're involved in.
All right, go ahead Brittany.
Good morning Commissioners, Brittany Phillips, Budget and Finance Officer. Here to present just really an overview of the purchase card cleanup process. So back in August, you directed that I do a county-wide cleanup of all the purchase cards, because we had over two-hundred-and-fifty active at that point. Since that process began, over a hundred purchase cards have been canceled. We've met with individual departments to discuss how to handle travel and training. So while there were purchase cards canceled, there were also some new ones that were created as well to kind of balance out some of those training purposes and stuff, because they like Public Works is a great example that they only have employees that, you know, they send to training, maybe not do everyday purchasing, but they go to training once a year or something like that, so we initiated like three or four travel cards in Public Works, but canceled at least seventy, so you know, it really like bound it, I mean, it more than balanced that back, so.
I didn't know I had that many employees, I got a few more petitions.
That's a discussion for another video. Yeah.
Yeah, so with that, we've also been reviewing the purchase card policy to figure out how we can tighten up those internal controls and this was also a suggestion by our auditor after our audit last year, so they, the Budget and Planning Committee has been working through that. Right now, we don't have any other comments from the Budget and Planning Committee, so I'm getting that ready to take to the department heads. And then after that, we'll bring it to the commit, the Commissioners after we have the final review from department heads. Any questions? Okay, great.
Appreciate your work, man.
Thank you.
Bigger, bigger, than we realized when we first started talking about it.
Yeah. Yeah, when we started talking. Yeah, especially in then, you know, Public Work, I keep picking on him, but he has a department, but he, like Lori sent over the list and it's like cancel, 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 like, oh, this is gonna take a while. But it was good work between all the departments, I mean, they really did look at their financial needs and it, it was really great, so.
Thank you.
I'm sure you have David Adams at nine fifteen, you have a little bit of break.
He was. In this area. That was.
You're in a simple, you know.
A few thousand, I'll probably get the rental one here.
I think, I thought you were gonna solve that one with that one and.
Are you, you're gonna solve for twenty people or whatever.
For me, I just suggest you do lots of arm stretches because it's gonna get.
If you've got lists of questions or anything, pass them on through and I'll make sure that my, they get, my first thing I was gonna, I would leave it. What's the one problem? Everybody hears it.
Yeah.
Chinese food there, buddy.
Hey, thanks. Greg, are you going to that meeting over the County Commissioners, whatever it is?
Yeah.
Have you seen the agenda?
Yeah.
Is there a particular topic that interests you? All the topics.
I, I don't remember what.
I just curious, I haven't seen it, so.
I've got here, I think it's either here or at home, we've got it printed out. I was, I glanced through it, because usually they have some options, like in the morning, there'll be a couple different ones, but this one they don't, everybody as far as I can tell, everybody goes to the same one all the way through, I think.
I assume that if I go over there, I assume they have a agenda, printed agenda.
I could.
I thought about stopping in just to kind of, since it's in Manhattan.
Yeah.
I think last year was in Wichita, so.
Now, last year now the KCA was in Wichita, but the KCCA was, the Commissioners was in Pittsburgh last year.
There's two herbs, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, there's Kansas Association of Counties, which is everybody, and then this is just County Commissioners. Gonna try to find if I can. And I'll set agenda if I can find it in the notes.
Jacob, is the hall pretty clear for those people up north of fences or anybody?
No. The law, those laws were written originally, I believe in eighteen ninety, somewhere around there, there's been minor modifications to those statutes.
Went to a meeting last year that I think extension or somebody was putting on the hill with fences.
Yeah.
It's pretty, pretty fascinating.
Of everything surprises.
Hey, thank you.
Appreciate it. How to sort that out.
Yeah, it's a, the, the fence views there, I, I mean, they're important, I think they, they definitely have a, a a real impact. Because you got landowners, of course, who don't just, who don't agree necessarily how to approach this fence that's on the boundary line between two properties and both receive a benefit. And that's kind of the basis of why that logs this, because both properties or owners are necessarily receiving something by there being a fence there, more than just one owner. So it's a definitely unique situation we have up there in the North County for this one, but I think we'll be able to get a rap on it.
So in the end, if, if a if an agreement is reached. Hopefully this, do they sign some kind of documents?
So if they agree, they can always agree to whatever they want to have done, but as far as agreeing to our fence view order, no, they do not. Because that's our, the commission, that's their duty, statutory obligation, their duty to put in those fence view orders, so what they say goes.
And it's not appealable to the courts?
It is, but still can be, but.
If you wanna go to the expense.
Yeah. Yeah, it definitely can be, but that's a little bit of a unique situation.
I need to up our pay for those too, that would help probably put some of it aside.
Seven fifty, seven fifty a person is the compensation for, and I don't think that has been updated.
Cash or check?
Oh, I'm sure we can get some points together, probably.
Seven fifty.
We do.
Yeah, the Commissioners, in order to go out there and do the fence view, they are authorized to receive a fee of seven dollars and fifty cents per person.
Which we never.
Yeah. Partly worth the paper.
It'll pay for a dozen eggs.
And have some change in your pocket, but not much change.
Now.
Now. I'll start, I'm gonna, I plan on starting to enforce that just a bit, just to, same as that antiquated statute where I can close the office, but it's a five dollar penalty per day and my office staff is more than.
Five dollars.
Pay that penalty.
That's hilarious, I did not know that one.
Thought that multiple times a year or two.
Probably around election time, tax season, I can see a few times a year, budget. Yeah, I know. Surprised we haven't had issues before, to be honest.
Hey Greg, the tomorrow's at eleven, eleven fifteen, Building Prosperity, Addressing Housing Needs. Very interesting topic, supporting economic growth. And of course, in this case, it's done by somebody from Johnson County, it's like that's gonna be a different worldview. As opposed to Lane County, you're right.
Yeah. When you go to the conference? Tomorrow.
When to go through?
Wednesday afternoon.
It's just Wednesday, it's noon.
They shorten that up quite a bit.
Well, they have a big symposium or something today. And then we got some get-together tonight at the Discovery Center. Five, five-thirty.
Tomorrow, seven fifteen starts.
Breakfast starts at six.
Yeah, a lot of the rules happen that way.
Like I figure one of us better be here at six, just because we're hosting, you know, I'll probably go a little early and get on.
Start off and speak little, put them in sleep.
Me. No. I was talking to Mayor McCullough and she said, I might just get a room and just come down and give a speech in my pajamas. That's early, like I know.
Call you to wake you up, I've gotten in a bad habit over the entire weekend and starting last Friday Thursday, waking up at like four-thirty, four forty every morning, including today.
Actually sleeping in for me, because I usually go to work at five on Tuesdays and Wednesdays, so.
I'm calling it old man's days.
You think, you think they'll have case studies today, if one of the topics is damage control, the anatomy of a crisis for county officials and staff?
Yeah, that's Mike, Mike Taylor, he's pretty good.
Sure there's case studies?
Yeah, I'm sure that I would do, he's from down in the Wichita area, so I've got a lot of case studies. Used to be a reporter for Cape News.
Calling for rain, and I'm probably the only guy in town who doesn't want rain right now.
Why don't you want rain?
Oh, yeah, pouring pad out there.
So they're pouring driveways and such, so.
They got today.
They're gonna pour, they're gonna pour, uh, the two hundred yards of concrete tomorrow is the plan.
Might have been poured by now, at least the reports from some of the health department staff was if one day they didn't put the forms in and the next day they had to rip them out with a guy rather exuberant on why they were done wrong.
Yeah, we, we've talked about that.
Meyer had that problem injunction on Sixth Street, they replaced on the parks, which side of the park? Call Ali comes in with a level. About half of it got taken out, they're redoing this.
Over half of the curb and gutter poured. And they poured the, and I'll show the, I'll show it on the pictures, kind of where they've poured so far for the parking, parking stalls, so. They're working hard today to get it prepped for tomorrow, so.
Might be a little soggy, but not too bad.
Yeah, they said it, it'll be fine to, to pour, so.
A little damp, but. Yeah, not bad, cause then don't make it so hard to work with sucking all the moisture out of it.
True, very true.
Yeah, the middle of summer, they'll hose down the bottom.
Yours too fast or doesn't cure fast enough, it's one of the two, very seldom is a just right.
He said it'll take it a week.
Or finish, I mean, I mean. Gotta work their tail off, the fence is too fast. Yours too fast.
Let me know what, what time their pouring, so I'm gonna write my name in it.
I've threatened that and they've threatened me, so.
Let us have no fun. That name and the.
I remember right, David Adams name.
That's, that's what I'm afraid of. Joshua and I was gonna sneak over and do that, and I'm gonna get blamed for it.
I didn't do it yet, sure.
Boy, you guys are friends. David Adams, EMS AM director with my monthly updates. Uh, for the month of March, starting out, uh, three hundred ninety-nine calls for service, which is down just a little bit from what we, what we typically average. Hundred and thirty-five out of the headquarters station, one of six out of eleventh and points, so we still have that one, one person here, we see two or three times a day. So that we're still, we're still working with, but, uh, um, so Public Works at seventy-four, fifty-eight and from the airport in Leneville was at twenty-six, so nothing out of the ordinary for any of those, really. So, uh, last week, we celebrated, uh, National, uh, Telecommunicators Week, which is the Dispatchers Week. So, um, and, uh, yeah, I don't know if you've been down to dispatch, you kind of see what they do, but, uh, if you haven't, it's, it's absolutely impressive. And, uh, so, uh, everybody tried to celebrate it then with, with food and thank yous and, and acknowledgement and such. Thanks to Vivian for helping post some of that on, on social media, but, uh, what, what they do is just incredible, and I, I couldn't do it, well, first of all, there are six computer screens, I can't keep track of two, so.
The best, like, visual, you know, it's a big block wall and you're just kind of stuck in there and.
But, uh, so, uh, working on new building construction, obviously, um, what we're working on now is, is working, starting on some of that transition, you know, we've got pretty much everything ordered that we need to order for the transition, um, and set to arrive on or on or May first, which is the, when they've asked us for it. Like, the only thing that, that we've been told may not be on time is the stove, and they're saying now it's like May seventh, so, but, uh, uh, but everything is on, on target and such, and, uh, there's even a couple of things we're kind of holding off on, because we just, it's new space and, and know exactly if we're gonna want these bins on this wall type of thing, so we're, we're holding off on some of these until we get in the building and kind of see how it flows, so we don't purchase something and then don't need it and, you know, we're in the wrong place, so. Uh, currently, we have the hiring process for our full-time apparent positions, it's going on, uh, as we speak, so we have ten, I think we had eighteen applicants, which is really good. Uh, we've, we've had ten take the written test and were, and have moved forward to the, today, which is the practical and the interviews, so. That is going on as we speak, so, um, but really, really happy with this, with this group of candidates. So, but, um, Alex and Josh keep working on their, they're gonna give a presentation to our department on quality improvement, safety, I don't know what it is, I I'm sure they've told me at some point, but, uh, they also keep some of that as a secret, so. But, uh, they're working on that, once a, once a week, they meet. Uh, we continue to work with the mental health and substance misuse task, working groups and task forces.
Is it Josh that's usually does, it's the IT?
Yes, okay, yeah, Josh and Alex.
Just need to make sure they stay on that, on that.
Yep, yeah, where, they know the meeting's coming up and it's on our calendars. So, we just talked about that, uh.
Well, actually, we were just supposed to have a meeting, but Major Asher had some.
Yep, so he canceled, so, no, we, we talked about that, because I couldn't remember, but, uh.
Yeah, so, yeah. Good to know.
Uh, staff rotations, I talked about, uh, we're gonna rotate some staff around, uh, I believe it's first part of August. You know, we do that, uh, just because we need to, the mix of, of experienced and new and, and sometimes it's just good for a, a move of, move of staff around from one ship to another and such, so. Uh, staff are continuing their documentation training, it is due, uh, by, at the end of business on April thirtieth and I think over half have done it and everybody has started it, it's about a six hour training and such, so. Uh, medical, uh, we had a medical director review last week through Zoom, had, uh, good participation and some really good case studies for our staff to discuss and, and such, so. And then, uh, observing field performance as we can, and then we had seven standbys in the last month. Uh, the two-way basketball tournament was here and then, uh, K-State soccer, and then there was a concert, it was a somebody I'd never heard of, it wasn't my type of music, so on a. I don't know, but it wasn't my type.
Your type is?
A country or old rock, old rock, it wasn't those. So, not at Bramledge for the college students, so, but, uh, so. Uh, education, the annual activist training this year is, uh, in May instead of July. Uh, it's in a new venue, we're do, they're doing it out at, uh, Bishop Stadium in Seaco Park area. So, um, but, uh, so they're working on that, um, I know they had a walk-through.
It's like an event.
Last week.
Set up as an event?
Uh, I, I don't know, um, I, I know just enough to be dangerous, so. Two different scenarios, two different scenarios like we always do, but I think one of them is gonna be maybe in Potter Hall and the other one's gonna be at Bishop Stadium. So, that type of thing, so.
We should check that out.
They, they keep that, the, the group that puts this stuff together keeps it's very close to the vest. They don't, they don't want that out, because more, if, if things people know, then, then it's not spontaneous and it's not long training, so. They keep that pretty close to the vest, if I were to ask them, they'd tell me, but I also understand that they would. They, they keep that amongst themselves, so. Uh, had an advanced medical life support class last week, two, two days, I participated in it, uh, it's always good for me to take these classes, it's sixteen hours long, so, um, but, uh, I passed my test on the first try, so I was happy about that. They, uh, I think they're taking bets on whether the boss would get it done the first time or not, but I did just fine. So, um, and then everything else, we just continue on. Uh, and then community outreach, only thing new was, uh, there was a Fancy Creek Bike Race up in North County and, uh, we had a crew up there for, for that, so. So, but, um, I don't, I don't think they were that busy, but they, they saw a couple, couple youngsters who got banged up a little bit, so. Uh, breakdown of responses, um, as you would, as you would expect, Saturday night and Sunday mornings were, were the busy. So, but, um. What's that?
I said Thursday.
Yeah, Thursday is two. And I don't, I don't know much anymore, it, it used to be Thursdays was like ladies' night or something, I, I don't know if they still do that kind of stuff. I never participated in any of that stuff.
Dollar picture was the price, period. What dollar picture was what it was. Special, that's what it was.
Boy, that was before my times. But nobody participated.
I guess then one year they raised it ten fucking a quarter.
My, times have changed.
Breakdown of the, of the hours and such, nothing really out of a, out of the ordinary there as well. So, and then sick person falls, falls, none, that none is, uh, a lot of that is that person that we, we, we see, you know, twice a day where they just need some assistance and doing stuff, they really don't have any complaints, they just need some assistance. So. Any questions about that, and we'll go, see the building. Uh, so the building, so you've got the four weeks in here, um, this one's starting March fourteenth. Um, you can see. Um, the, this is the apparatus bay, they're, they're now painting the, the ceiling, we're putting that dry fall on the ceiling and they're about half done now, so now they're gonna take everything, move it to this to the north end and then paint there, cause it makes a mess everywhere, good. So, uh, the the day room, the, uh, countertops outside of the training room, meeting room, there. Uh, ship lap in the, uh, in the crew quarters. So, and then this is the, the concrete, this is where this is now got, uh, the big posts up. This is the generator and that is the master transfer switch, those, that's what those are. So, uh, this is the, uh, administrative side, the wall for the water fountains outside of the bathrooms, and it's women's restrooms. So. The colors up front looks really, real, really sharp, um. So. And then skip this one, and then, last week, so there's, there's it now with the, the posts up for the generator and the master transfer switch, said the generator is like nine feet tall, that's why there's, these are nine foot six inches, so that's why, so they'll set them in by crane, so. But, uh, area C, they've got the carpet in the area C, the admin side is completely done, except for one of the hallways where we're waiting on that LVT. In the staff side, it's just the LBT in the, uh, uh, living room area.
Figure that out, what happened?
They said that, uh, they went from five distribution, distribution centers in Georgia to one in Ohio. And they've moved seventeen hundred trucks worth of stuff from these five to Ohio. And they were told they can't have all those trucks in the same place at the same time, so they sent them out and I don't know if they have a computer failure or what, but they don't know what's on what truck and where those trucks went.
They still haven't sounded?
Nope. So, as of this morning, Sheldon and I talked, he said, don't get another update on Thursday. So. And I reminded them, I know where we can go buy some. So, uh, this is the outside, the retaining wall, um, so here is the, the drainage ditch is running right through, right around here. So, that is the retaining wall and that's the patio for the, for the crews, the outside patio area there, so. And then the training room, meeting room there, that's the carpet and such, so. It is coming along well, they're finishing up some things in the ceilings, getting a few more wiring uh, sensors put in and such, and then they'll start dropping the rest of the ceiling in, uh, most all the lights, I think, are in, so. Um, and then I think Cory and his team are there this week to start hooking up the, the data cables and such, the run to the, run to the boxes, but the boxes and things, I believe is kind of where they're at. So. So, any questions for me on any of that? I will have, uh, uh, at least BHS here, I have not heard back from Park Images, but they'll be here on May first, can give you a building update for for the headquarters and then also for the next, the next project, so I tried to time it where they'd be able to provide some, a little bit on both of them, so. All right, thank you.
Thanks, David. John, I take your Alvin today?
I guess so. But I sure am.
So are we.
I don't know, speak for yourself.
This is the easy one.
Yeah. And you probably wouldn't have gotten yelled at afterwards too.
They get you in pretty quick. Oh, yeah, they were, they, they had nobody there. When we drove by, two K Ram Teds, I said, that'd be a good place to make it right in. Fearless. Whatever it is. Kills, doesn't it? Yeah, that's what it is now, yeah. But now those guys were bored when I showed up, so they were happy, but they're like, I can't believe it's what we've done all day long, it's either uh, patching tires or I think they set something else, it's either one or the other, all day.
Lucky you. I've had to go back home, of course. I had to go back home in November, of course, for my mom's funeral. I get ten minutes on the east side of Lawrence over there and my, my gauge comes on, I'm like. I pulled into the turnpike area over there and sure enough, nail. I filled it up just enough to try to get back into Lawrence and of course, it was during rush hour, so I almost didn't make it, so. I stopped there at Crown Automotive, cause it was the first place, of course, it wasn't one of the tires I was gonna originally replace to begin with, so. And I'm gonna have to replace it, I'm like, well, if I'm gonna replace one, I might as well just.
Time for a new car when you have to replace them all.
Yeah, right, I'm surprised I didn't try.
Yeah, I know, I'm still driving a two thousand five. Good morning, Commissioner John Allerin, Public Works, and I have a public notice, we're gonna replace a structure on Alert Road, scheduled to begin Tuesday, April twenty-second, project located about a tenth of a mile north of Pleasant Hill Road. Alert Road will be closed through, to through traffic during the construction from Pleasant Hill Road north to Seven Springs Road. Project expected to be completed by Wednesday, April twenty-third, weather permitting.
How much did it cost you?
Twenty bucks, twenty-one with taxes. Yeah, I'll tell you, that's for sure, the only other time I've ever had a flat tire was when, uh, me and Casey were gonna go view the, uh, eclipse, the solar, what's that happen? And of course, on our way down there, I somehow ran over just a giant bull. And of course, on our way down there, I somehow ran over just a giant bowl. I mean, it was like a half inch thick. And, uh, of course we're on a time crunch, cause that only happens for so long.
Table.
Yeah, yeah.
A year ago.
Yeah, and, um. Where I think it happened in Lawrence and I had to pull over somewhere in Lenexa. And then I had to air it up real quick and figure out where I was gonna take it. And thankfully, I think it was like a Big O tires. Around there that they were able to replace the little thing.
I always wondered if they had smaller tires, like preuses.
Well, at the time, yeah, you know? Maybe, maybe there's a marketing strategy right there.
Right. Three and a half tires and wait on tires. Might have been good just to buy a new car, not to think about it. Could have got out a bit quicker.
Both. Tire, yeah, neither one's cheap.
Paid about thirteen hundred bucks.
Okay.
Like I said, I was gonna replace two of them already and then I popped the third one and I'm like, it doesn't make any sense to buy three. Reminds me, I need to get it in and get those rotated at some point. About there.
Every five thousand?
Yeah.
It's all highway miles.
They're still the same length. Kind of like the twelve inch, we're not getting any longer, it's still a mile.
It's got, it's got, you know, that they're doing that mill overlay project on I seventy right now. So. You know, it's a nice fresh road.
See what they need to do.
They're your tires. And that was at a standstill yesterday on Friday when I left here. It was on a standstill on, on I seventy heading into Pika.
Oh, really?
Yeah. I was aggravating and believe it or not, there was nothing actually blocking the road. There was nothing stopping people, but they wanted to stop anyways. Don't know why.
Scenic this time here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good morning, Commissioners, Brava Spencer.
Need to make a motion here first. And move every recesses, the Board of County Commission and then reconvene as the Board of County Health.
On second.
Been moved in second and recesses, the Board of County Commissioners and being as the Board of Health, all in favor.
Sorry about that, Brava.
Um, Brava Spencer, maternal child health supervisor at the Riley County Health Department. I'm here today to talk to you about our MOU with the Flint Hills Volunteer Center. Um, through this M, MOU, it outlines roles, responsibilities and expectations between, um, the Riley County Health Department and the Flint Hills Volunteer Center. Uh, we originally established this in twenty twenty, um, and they did provide us a lot of volunteers during our COVID efforts. Um, and they, and the MOU needs to be updated to reflect our new health director, um, Diane Creek. And she will be our agency representative and will serve as the agency's liaison. Um, and the reason I'm here today is because we are looking to have, um, volunteers for our community baby shower event on May thirty first. And, um, in order to do that, we have to update the MOU. Um, so I did attach the, um. Volunteer, the MOU between the Flint, Flint Hills Volunteer Center and Riley County Health Department. And again, it just outlines their responsibilities, um, and then our responsibilities. And I did go ahead and put Diane's, um, contact information since she will kind of be overseeing that. Forward. So we just kind of wouldn't let you know that. Again, see if you have any questions or.
Good partnership.
Well, I would make a motion to approve the updated memorandum of understanding between the Riley County Health Department and Flint Hills Volunteer Center.
We moved it second to approve the updated memorandum of understanding between the Board of County Health Department and, uh, Flint Hills Volunteer Center, all in favor. I don't know. Thank you, Brava.
Thank you.
I don't see no green light anymore. If it fixed one thing, we broke another. Now the green light's supposed to be on the face there. It's probably catching us there.
I would make a motion to recesses Board of County Health.
The movement second recesses, where help and reconvenance, Board of County Commissioners, all in favor.
Fix one thing, broke something else. Cause green light was on earlier.
It was.
Maybe it doesn't matter. I don't know. Hey, Chris, it's Richard's link. Now, um, the mics appear not to be on. Desk here, green light's not on. So. I think that some things catching our sound, but these mic lights definitely aren't on. Thanks. Bye.
John Oliver, Public Works. Got two. Um, request basically this, this time. Uh, first one is to, we've had a resignation in our, that's all. That we'd really like to rebuild. But, but the first one is to request the fiddle of the Public Works Operator, uh, one or two, preferably the two position. On the crew that patches, see if they're able to. Both this one or that one, all of our. Or any of the main.
I would make a motion to approve the Public Works Department, and that's why I'm.
Been moved. Public Works, everybody's tired for the Public Works Operator Division, all in favor.
Please sign.
Right. We can see that. It's these on the desk, not lit up.
I think that one too, cause I couldn't hear Brava anymore, like in my office.
These are off, that one's off too.
Yeah.
I've been talking for a while now about doing some reorganization through, um, and the Public Works, basically the room, room side. We had. I've got some organization charts too that show what we were, where we were at, um, last time. The chart was approved was in July twenty three, I believe. And. The, the one, the, the other one you have is where I would like to be, and where we've done some changes in other sections that you've already approved. So. I'd like to range some of the leadership roles in the Operations Division. So on this chart, this including. The limit, adding the traffic control supervisor position. I'd like to take that and change that into the Assistant Operations Manager. With the oncoming or the retirement of our operations manager here, maybe the next two years or so. This, the idea is maybe get somebody in here that may. Work under him, get used to the situation, the system, and then, uh, maybe take over. And then as doing that, that kind of leaves the traffic control not really a supervisor. We'd like to make one of those two positions that remain there, a crew chief, which is kind of a. Not quite a supervisor position, but kind of a lead role in the division. Kind of build up direct activities for the day. Inventory and other items are done. Doing them, these, these things have kind of created a training session planning, which the operations lead, assistant manager will closely with the operations manager. And we will step up into that position. That part of that is called position, we will supervise the traffic control division. Group chief will give daily instructions, track down, track work orders, make signs, keep inventory. One of our current employees has already kind of assumed that role without the title. Um, we've been using it for the last couple of months or so. Doing those duties. So, any discussion we have on that would be making those changes, um. Eliminating. We, oh, well, part of some of the changes we made, like personal budget in positive direction. So we might, we'll be changing or saving some money there. We have eliminated one operator, two position. And build operating our public parts and purchasing crew that you just, I just wanted. And building maintenance position, we're still probably looking at saving or reducing the. Current budget per. Not much, but around sixty five. With these changes. That we've made throughout, since about the end of twenty four. The twenty six budget will also be reduced for, as it stood. Without any changes, making these changes will have decreased the twenty six request by about six. Question, probably what I'm trying to do or what. How I try to say it.
Last part maybe, but I don't think we're gonna fix that.
Yeah, yeah, motion.
It's in red, that's what threw me off, sorry. Uh, we'll move to approve the reorganization of the Public Works Department and the build of positions of Assistant Operations Fleet Manager. And Traffic Control Crew Chief as president.
My second.
Been moved in second to approve the reorganization of the Public Works Department. The fill of the station to Assistant Operations Fleet Manager and Traffic Control Crew Chief as president.
Thanks, Sean. Next commissioner, he has. Dug in the air in here.
Yeah, it's just like this one.
Out the rain, it was not called the problem, it stayed. It did. You see it along the curve, bottom of the curve, there.
Porch.
He's reading what I drove.
I have to like, I go, you put my car together and then I'm great. I don't make sense of.
Yeah, they like going.
Yeah. Yeah. I started having feeling that no one knows of like, if you're the key points, like in my own voice, I mean, the same thing. You have to go edit yourself, right?
They've already rented.
Yeah, yes. How are you?
You just gotta leave it at your desk.
I always forget though.
Yeah.
And here I am.
I think it's practice. John, girl, gonna have you start.
That better not be true. I have. Fully rehearses, maybe, right? All weekend, what I'm gonna say.
I bet it will. I bet it. I mean, it's not like you give this presentation before, right? So, you know.
Right. Absolutely. No, it was, you know, written, which I did. Turns out. That's not how it works. It's super nice. I can't wait to go. How are you? I'm gonna go for a walk.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
Yeah, we can always bring it on there and thank the fellows who has.
We're gonna do, this is what I said. I'll have this weekend, I was like, oh, I want one.
Yeah, okay.
So maybe I'll start picking.
You have a new nice board.
I have an explorer.
What?
Does that be Fraser's office that has the new board explorer?
I think so. But I know, like especially for the person who has, they could wait a year.
It looks, I was walking, that's not what I was like, okay. You can go first and say it all. You better not do that. Can you do what you're gonna do?
It's not gonna be great.
Oh, I bet it will be, that's what I say.
You guys are both good public speakers, it'd be great.
With anybody who's here, right?
Yeah, right?
It's the podium.
We have to get you to put in. Cause I thought things I said now, like I feel like my voice is great. Like I think I can talk like this, like this, so much, but.
I'm like, that's not even fair.
No, that's not the same.
Morning.
On a water permit, happen waste water permit. Didn't reach out and stuff them this week, then as long as their, ones are stepped out.
Lack your time. Maybe you should wear more on tits. I had to really, oh, I really had to focus, I was like, I like that. Pocket square two?
I did, but I don't know where it went.
The dryer ate it.
Yeah, nothing, yeah, nothing. Mark somewhere else. For the time being, is that too much? Yeah. No, he says he will see, he why I'm, you know. He basically just do, they say, rocky part of it where they're, where it's not gonna get disturbed.
I kind of figured out what happened. How the camera goes together then, then they use that one to.
Yeah, I watched it from there. I didn't, wasn't able to catch anybody that sat.
I didn't think about that. Set it up here this way. You can hide right back in the corner over there.
Seventy year old, forty year old. Wow, oh, that's a good spread.
Yeah, I'm sure I.
I've talked about.
Like the discussions on. Brought it up and nobody else wanted to talk about it, so. Um, we kind of like, we planned an entire hour long meeting or half an hour long meeting to talk about something that. She wakes up saying, okay.
How are you? Well, if you wrote anything, it's something.
University programs included, public speaking.
That's what I said, I'm not very, I can have conversations with you all day, but it's the podium that.
Close your eyes.
Yeah. You're so scary.
I know, I am.
That's not true. I'll pretend none of them are working.
I think it's a lot easier to sit too, like you're more comfortable, like, it's not as like formal as standing up. Cause you, you just talk to every single one of them and you see that grace. Just pretend you're sitting, just squat a little.
Thank you, protesters, I'm the public information officer and we're here to talk about some participant experiences in last year's leadership programs. Now, one of the ways I do generously invest in where the county staff is to sponsor a variety of leadership programs designed both to strengthen individual and team performance, build the next, I guess, generation, if you will, of leaders and supervisors in the county. And often this requires a pre-sufficient investment of time and effort on their part, as well as a financial investment on our part, we're very grateful. And we want to share one of the participant experiences from the past year. We have two people who went through the NACO, at least five to twelve months of the program, and then two went through the Flint Hills. And there are others to talk to about that for once, I won't go on to tell you. Um, since Megan stepped up first, I'll have her share a little bit about her.
Good morning, so I completed the, the NACO leadership program. The pre-work started in July and then the official course took off in August, successfully completed it in November. And the way that program is laid out is we met, every week we met with a cohort, a smaller group, and it was all on like a T V's platform. We met, we discussed all of the coursework for the week, and we usually had one focus of that coursework. So we would, we'd come up with a question, it was kind of a broad question, and we'd talk about it and discuss it. And then on Fridays of every week, you would meet with the whole entire group on Zoom, where you got to hear speakers and a summary of what everybody talked about in all of the groups. So we did that for every week, we did have two weeks off during the whole course, so that way people fell behind, had a chance to catch up. Save a good eight hour of an internal week, would be my destination. However, it was a great program, I really enjoyed it, but my main takeaway would be just the importance of communication and how we communicate with each other within within our agencies, within the county, within the community, just for how we communicate as well.
Hi, Tammy Lance, Riley County Church was office, and I was part of the Flint Hills Regional Leadership Program this year. And I will say that I really valued this experience with the leadership program. For a couple of reasons, I'll just highlight, one of the main was visiting surrounding entities, both government and non-government to see where they're finding success, where they're lacking a little bit in success, and where they see theirself going in the future. And really service above self was a big part of that organization and really takes you back to kind of look at how you're contributing to both your workplace and your community. And really the, I, I tell them the value in the relationships that I built. That will then maybe be people that I can reach out to, to, to help promote what we have going on here by the end. And I really would encourage anybody, I, I'm a growing leader in this organization. And I would say that I, I think it's a good program to try to get others in, in my type role to participate in.
So Russell, so I went through the NACO, through the NACO class, and I played a later class in the year, so I ended right before Christmas. I think the best part about it was just talking about the communication stuff, getting to meet with the cohort of like-minded people and stuff, so my group that I was with was far west, so I had a couple of Oregon, some Arizona, I think there was one from Nebraska. But it was a very diverse group from finance, there was meet with fire, there was police officer. So it was very good to, to discuss with them, kind of saying, we're all having the same issues and what's working for them. But I, I, I found it very beneficial. That definitely worth investing in, like she said, about eight hours or so, and you're gonna get out of it what you put into it. So if you just go through the, the online stuff real quick, you're not gonna get much out of it. But if you go through it and discuss it very well and, and hit all the online stuff that they post for you, you're gonna get way more out of it. But it's very beneficial and things will work. Thank you.
I'm Evan McMillan, of Works, I attended the Flint Hills Regional Leadership Program with Tammy, that's the second, what she said. I think it was a great course, definitely recommend others wanting to focus on stewardship, serving others, over yourself, and also a lot of community involvement. Yeah, I'd recommend the course.
Saw a lot of pictures.
And I didn't know Evan prior to that course, so, I mean, yeah, built a relationship right here in Riley County that maybe we wouldn't have ever had the opportunity to, to work together.
Do you have any questions about their experiences of the program or things they might implement?
Well, I'm sure, I'm taking the time to do it too, and then not just, like Doug said, not just, here I am, sitting there, paying attention and learning. That's what we hope to do, so. Glad to have that attitude.
Yeah, that's the first step, and we want you to, to be invested in what we do here. So we're gonna open the applications internally and hopefully send four participants again this year. And they sub-nominate, I mean, your department of students says, you know, are you interested in this, hopefully the answer is yes, but they have the first chance to participate and then be endorsed by their department then, so. And then we'll have a committee of three people, so it's Amy and Amanda and myself. We'll go through the applications and then bring those to you for final approval. If that sounds good, okay, thank you so much.
Right street.
Yeah, yeah.
Just my paperwork, so we're gonna give new money on some.
We haven't gotten any new money.
That was that USDA.
Oh, yeah.
This was saying we got this much money.
Four hundred and sixty nine thousand. I can't hear you guys at all.
But it was what we already get.
Yeah.
I thought it was, the numbers there would sound like what we already get. It's just no way to hear from us, I don't know, I guess.
We haven't done anything really, I guess, yeah, not, it's been a while, and I got.
I'm still waiting on that.
Request release?
Thank you.
So then they put it in my language, but then they added at the end of it.
Yeah, no.
The one for Oz. Basically, the Oz, to do some of the engineering and construction.
This is statutory requirement.
I understand that the goal is that it goes out.
Fun to see how they.
Full another heavy lift in process though.
Oh, I know, I, I did because I had such a negative. The whole check, it's one of the ten, ten largest tool for like your whole history. My bill rate, the leadership program's been around for.
Oh, they just wrapped up.
Okay, so we're down. It gets a little, um. We're actually on the ground, but then we go up to the side.
Yeah, I don't think anybody has.
Amazing, what's so neat about it is they go and visit things just, you know, within thirty, forty minutes of your house, you know, it exists. In Rock County and here you're done.
As long as it's got my name on it.
Talked to Joe before I came over, and he said he got an email today that Google Maps could read backwards, but he said, don't pay attention, it's spam.
That's pretty good, that's pretty good.
Here's, I told him the canned meat one, and he, I gotta giggle out. He has a joke of the day calendar, so every day he pulls it off and gets, gets a new one, it's a dad joke of the day.
He has a joke of the day calendar, so every day he pulls it off and gets gets a new one, it's a dad joke of the day. And he calls um Chris and IT and leaves him a voicemail every morning, and so you just hear like the little bit and I'm just like, oh my goodness. It's a thing now.
Yeah, it is a thing.
It was a lot of. Go get him. It's really, he was saying something about that, maybe they've been looking.
That'd be nice. One vote.
Oh. True.
You're a good kid.
One art sign too.
Yeah.
I mean, you hope, right?
Yeah. Yeah, that's right.
Fuck you, Doug.
You're right.
I might still be better than the alternative. I'll take that anymore, I need more coffee. So you need to need more coffee? Yeah, probably. I might have to do without.
Sure, we absolutely.
Well, no, I'm just very particular.
Yes.
It is. That has to be mine.
You're round. What kind of do you try?
I do uh espresso, the virtual machines, oh my god. That's the means.
Yeah.
I have to buy one. And it was only, I think. That was one I bought a couple of years ago, so maybe that's.
My ears burning?
Probably wearing.
Yeah.
Now, so. It's gonna be similar to if you're.
And he uh stretch for some of that.
I do like the coffee, I think.
You four yards, I don't smell your hope, right?
But we're gonna do it, yeah.
You can try to bribe me later. Okay.
I don't know how to say, but it's almost like it's a, it's like a thicker coffee than just like your standard drip and.
Really?
Hmm.
Yes.
I don't expect, I mean, there's.
Yeah, definitely can.
The best thing is you get like a regular coffee uh pods and then you get a little espresso shots too, so then you put in your regular coffee. Now you get you really good.
Yeah.
Those are the days I see you skipping between.
Yeah, exactly.
That's right.
Yeah, that's right.
If you even have Starbucks guy here delivering.
If you think. No, I don't usually though. I watch it with business.
Well, I got it. Got a bag of coffee.
I see it on the issue. It's like. Oh, yeah.
But force me to get a little.
Yeah, I just want to forego.
I know.
I get into this time of the year, and it's.
These coffee.
That's great.
I gotta use to explain. Good. Yeah.
Oh, right. I mean, using using French press. That's pretty good coffee, too. And that's what we do if we grow.
Really, commissioners?
Yeah.
Commissioners, Brian Parker, county counselor. Uh, I don't have anything specific to report today. Uh, we're just continuing to plug away, knock stuff out. Uh, and so I would, unless there's any questions, uh turn the floor over um or anything that the commissioners wish to discuss during the mysterious work session.
Go ahead.
You should. Yeah, make this list, I look at it, and something always pops up.
Go ahead.
Where are we on firing range?
On firing range.
Working on that.
No.
I don't know which one of you, but I know we're trying to get that.
Sure. Yeah.
We are um, where we're at, Jacob, is uh we have, so through our communications, we have um Mr. Knopf has re-engaged and and responding.
And for what, didn't get. Hold anybody?
Yes, sir. And so now, what what the plan is, um. Well, I'll just. Um, um, I can share all of this just out. So basically, what the stance is that the county um is continually looking to. Uh, which I understand is communicated from the commission to process from Mr. Pullman. Is that all that we're doing is, I mean, do some probing agreements that, um, we have a photo actually, and I've made it where. Um, John found the photo, so I don't know how this photo was found, of the road in nineteen ninety five. That shows that it was underwater. And it was not a paid super highlight prior to um the range being opened. Uh, we have not heard from uh the owner, but we have heard from the owner's brother. Um, who has uh said that um. I think he's now at two three million dollars, that somehow the county should have to put in to remediate this, and. Our position is that we're going to do what the consultants have said. Make some uh, you know, improvements that once we can actually get everyone organized to go out, because there was some weather. Um, Albert and everybody will go visit and the property will do this as well, they just will, they can take it or leave it. And if they don't want it, then they can take this for it. But our, the last thing that we're doing is legal to put that in their hands is preparing an access agreement. And that's um, as Jacob to last week to start working on that. And I think it's, I think it's come along pretty well, so once we have the access agreement to them, and then we offer to set up the time, it is. To them to uh take us up on our kind offer to comply with the rules. That's that's where we just speak that silly.
So there's communication for that, you can.
Yeah, yes, yes, we're pleased about that, commissioner, we're pleased about that night. I understand that there will be um, there's probably going to be whether the agreement has the property owner, but. From where I said, and that's why I think from the net, but there really isn't anything attorney client about this, the county's position, county's position. And it will not change. If they haven't, they're, they have properly remediated, as required in the lease, then I would also, we're ready to do it. And if. Don't. Exactly. Right, that's all I have to say about that. And anything else, commissioners? There is a deadline. For them?
Yeah.
Um, here. Yeah. I'm not aware of that, they should be. Um, they, not, then. Like they wait five years to see if, and I don't mind, you know, traditionally as legal counsel. As the division members, we take a pretty legal view around there, what we share publicly. Um, traditionally as a counsel, you live one house to the other side, that if they don't enforce their rights within five years, they're subject to statute limitations. But here, since they're citizens, and since we're absolutely not concerned about the integrity of our legal position and that we're doing what's right, we're happy to do it. Um, we're just waiting for new degrees of work. Um, future of. Um, to, whenever that happens, that's fine, but if not, then they don't do that within the five year period, then they'll be barred, and they wouldn't have a right to enforce the. Um, to enforce us to clean up the.
How many years has it been? Does it change that?
One hand. Yeah, it was in twenty one when we. Yeah.
Yeah.
Somewhere twenty one.
So I guess we have a little more time, I, but um, Mike, we'll do a, we'll do a countdown, uh we'll, we'll do a, we'll do an S O L. As they, as they say in the law, in the statute of limitations, under S O L. Right?
Yeah.
So, we're, I, I was going on kind of off the top of my head, and what we've always talked about, we're getting closer to the five year period, but. Um, we'll, we'll go back and transfer this, you know, get that the exact timeline laid out.
More than.
We took uh, we took over the construction and they started using it.
Right. Well, it's great. That's very cool. That's all of it then.
Wow. So, that, it's a great question, we should.
Yeah.
We're excited about that being done, and and we should have the access agreement done, probably by. Usually, yeah. So we're on the way. Any other questions?
Jacob, yeah.
Take the.
There, commissioners, uh Jacob Vance, the deputy county counselor, um, you'll notice that that resolution uh making findings today. Is there for you guys to sign. Uh, I'll get that over to the city uh as soon as possible today. So that way, we're still, well, that story, part time playing. Um, one other point, actually, I wanted to bring up this, well, is our, of course, our lovely fence view. Um, I think it would probably be appropriate that we set a time to kind of discuss uh options uh for the bits view with. And have you guys kind of deliberate, like you guys want uh to see it delivered. So whatever, whenever it works for you guys, there's no statutory requirement as far as time goes with these, so whatever, whatever you guys want to do.
Got to get it on the agenda.
Okay, I mean, do you guys want to give it a week, two weeks, or?
No, I. Pretty uh. Sooner the better. Yeah, better still. All right, well, it's like. We're early. We'll be smitten. And then we can.
Yeah, I got a little. Putting a space on the next step, we'll.
Okay. Then I'll work with Cindy on hopefully this Thursday.
Yeah.
Okay. Can you do that?
We need to make a motion on this resolution.
We do.
Yeah.
We do. I'll get there, okay.
Now, I'll go ahead and move, uh, we approve resolution, we can find concerning the city of Manhattan's request to annex a point nine. We get for track form.